If you would please rise, I would like to invite Reverend Paul Daniel of the First Southern Baptist Church to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you, let's pray together. Our Father and our God, we thank you today for the freedoms that we enjoy and that we cherish as American citizens, and we pray that we'll have the wisdom to pass these same freedoms on to succeeding generations. We ask your blessing on the meeting today. Thank you for these are leaders who guide us. Would you grant them wisdom and grace as they make decisions that affect all of our lives? Would you bless this meeting today and the agenda set before them? Thank you for all that are here and things that need to be done. May your blessing be upon our city and our state and our nation. We pray in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Supervisor Angus, if you would lead us in the pledge?
[inaudible]
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much Reverend, and thank you very much folks. When it comes to, I should have confirmed Supervisor Johnson's appearance on telephone, is he present Jenny?
Supervisor Johnson, are you there?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you, we have a full board. May I have a motion to call for an executive session to be held October 19, 2015 at 9:30 a.m., or at the conclusion of the regular meeting, whichever is later, for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03 subsection A, 3 and 4, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterix.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item one, discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Attorney Exstrom, other than the items that we have starred later in the agenda, are there any reason to go into executive session?
No, there are not Chairman.
Thank you Attorney Exstrom. Going on to number two, committee and/or legislative reports. I will start with Supervisor Johnson on the phone. Supervisor Johnson, do you have any reports?
Nothing Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Angus?
I do, thank you Chairman Moss. Last week I attended the Transfer of Public Lands National Strategy Conference in Salt Lake City along with about 200 other county supervisors, commissioners, state representatives and senators, other men and women, who believe that the time has come for the U.S. government to fulfill the promises made to western states to return public land. The problem seems to be, as we all know, record-setting catastrophic wildfires burning up millions of animals, emitting carcinogenic pollutants into our air and destroying wildlife habitat and watersheds, are the results of decades of dysfunctional federal bureaucracy. Locking up access to our nation's abundant resources has needlessly placed America at the mercy of foreign powers for essential materials such as timber and rare earth minerals vital to national defense, renewable energy and electronics technologies. Federal policies are stifling the economic opportunity of western communities and requiring citizens in the east to pay for it. This is undermining every state's independence and flies in the face of our system of liberty and self-governance. The Property and Environmental Research Center, PERC, out of Montana, says by nearly all accounts our federal lands are in trouble, both in terms of fiscal stewardship and environmental The problem that we're being told is that we have to preserve the environment as if it were a dusty old museum. There's a hands-off, don't-touch policy coming from Washington that we see every day with more and more land being taken from public use. But what we are getting is smoky air, polluted water and decimated wildlife. This leads to depressed and unsafe communities and blocked and destroyed opportunity for recreation. But what we really need to do is restore the balance and tend to our environment like a garden. We all want to ensure healthy air, water and wildlife and build strong and thriving communities with abundant and safe recreation. And who better to do that than Arizonans for Arizona, or Nevadans for Nevada, or Montanans for Montana? The management policies coming from Washington DC are just simply not working. Maybe they are well-intentioned, we can debate that, but they are destroying our way of life here in the west and we cannot just sit by anymore while our lands are destroyed by fire, animal populations being decimated by predator species, the wolves, which are being introduced in places they should not be. So much federal control of the west is not only unfair, it is failing our states and our nation, and the freeing of public lands in the west is the structural fix to a foundation that is crumbling. The American Lands Council is a nonprofit organization of individuals, counties, businesses and organizations that was founded by county commissioners in 2012. The mission of the American Lands Council is to secure local control of western public lands by transferring federal public lands to willing states. ALC is leading the charge by giving leaders the knowledge and courage to battle for the only solution big enough to ensure better access, better health and better productivity through freeing certain public lands to local stewardship. The transfer of public lands movement is growing quickly as more and more people realize how destructive the policy of inaction has been in the western states. We learned that legislation has been introduced in 17 states and is in various different stages. Utah and Nevada lead the way. In 2012 Utah passed the Transfer of Public Lands Act, that has withstood legal challenges. Utah has now appropriated $2 million towards litigation and has hired on the best constitutional lawyers in the country. We heard from the governor of Utah and he confirmed that. I participated in strategy sessions on legislative strategy, legal action and messaging. There are committees already in place to discuss preparing for the transfer and discussing how the land would be managed when the time comes. I'm pleased to report that the discussion revolves around local control rather than state control. We heard presentations about how government regulations are destroying this country. So far this year, there has been over 60,000 pages of new regulations that came out of DC. Right now the federal government employs 300,000 people in some regulatory capacity. To put that into a real-life example, that's half the entire population of Wyoming. It's stifling business and killing the economy. The public policy statement of the American Lands Council is this: "We urge the timely and orderly transfer of public lands to willing states for local control that will provide better public access, better environmental health and better economic productivity. We support excluding existing national parks, congressionally-designated wilderness areas, Indian reservations and military installations from the transfer, and we support equipping federal, state and local agencies with resources necessary to plan for a successful transition to state-based ownership and management of the transferred public lands." I brought back a lot of information with me, I even have a thumb drive filled with information I'd be happy to provide to anybody who wants to find out more information, I suggest you go to the American Lands Council website, that's www.americanlands, that's plural, americanlandscouncil.org, and they have videos, white papers, anything you want to know you can find out there. Thank you Chairman Moss.
Thank you Supervisor Angus, I will comment that it's a very important issue, people don't understand that, back east they can't invest 15, $25,000 per pupil for education because they own 95% of their land, and that property tax pays for schools while we own 15%, which puts us at a competitive disadvantage. Thank you very much. Supervisor Bishop?
I have nothing, thank you.
Supervisor Watson?
Thank you Chairman Moss, just wanted to take a moment to thank the Mojave County Sheriff's Office and Sheriff McCabe, the Mojave County Search and Rescue Unit for all the great work that they did up in the flooding event near Hildale, Utah and Colorado City. It was a tragic event, but Mojave County and its employees and volunteers really rose to the occasion and I was very proud to be a part of that team up there. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Watson, and thank you Sheriff McCabe, to both you and your volunteers. Going on to item three, the county administrator's report. County Administrator Hendricks?
I have no report today Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you County Administrator Hendricks. Can I have a motion to approve the August 3, 2015 and August 17, 2015 Board of Supervisor Meeting Minutes and the August 17, 2015 and September 4, 2015 Board of Supervisor Special Meeting Minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're at the call to the public, I have two people who have signed up to speak, I'll start with Kathleen Mishler. Ms. Mishler, if you would approach, you can have up to, and please state your name for the board and make sure I didn't mess it up, and you would have up to three minutes to make your comments.
Okay. My name is Kathleen Mishler, I live in Golden Valley. I'd like to thank you, the supervisors, for the opportunity to make this request. My request is for you to vote yes to display our national motto above the county seal. I've got to put my glasses on, I can't read my own writing. There are 123 counties and cities in California that have voted yes, 576 across America. You would be the first in Arizona to vote yes on this. Our national motto was adopted by Congress under Dwight D. Eisenhower, July 30, 1956. It was overwhelmingly reaffirmed with a 396 to 9 vote on November 1, 2011. Excuse me. This vote would be legal and then nothing to challenge, so I ask for a yes vote for our national motto, "Above the county seal, which is in God we trust." I would like, with your permission, to email you all some information on that, maybe you could put it on the agenda. Thank you.
Please do ma'am, thank you very much. Next we have Chuck DeShazer. Mr. DeShazer, if you could come up, please state your name and you have up to three minutes to share your comments with the board.
Yeah, my name's Chuck DeShazer, I live at 7978 Polaris Road, and it's recently been brought to my attention that a group in Topoc Golden Shores is planning for about a month out what they're calling the Topoc Desert Tromp, and it's going to be an off-road poker run that is, I didn't realize until I met with BLM this last week, is going to be going down Polaris Road, and currently, I live on Polaris Road and you really have to use a four-wheel drive to get out to my place. And they're talking on the advertisement here of having 250-plus vehicles going through a wash that used to be maintained by the county but is no longer maintained, and then at the end of the run, there's going to be the same 250 or however many vehicles show up, go back through that same wash, and it's about 200 feet across, and I'm just concerned about what's going to be accessible after this run because, as has been discussed in the past, the county won't maintain it, I'm not allowed to maintain it by ordinance, and you know, how is this going to work and affect my and my wife's access to and from our house? Not to mention the fact that if it's an off-road event, they're using, they're going to be using Polaris Road, Regal Road, Alteris Road, Franconia Road. Designated roads should not be for an off-road event is what I'd like to comment on, and hopefully you'll see that when the permit comes before you, because I've been told by BLM that you need to approve a permit for the special use, that you'll oppose it and deny that, make them come up with a different route. Thank you.
Thank you very much Mr. DeShazer. I have no other people signed up to speak during the call to the public. We do have two presentations this evening, or this morning, excuse me, I'm losing track of time already. First, we are recognizing Supervisor Gene Bishop, Supervisor District 5, as the recipient of the 38th Annual Andy Awards Lifetime Achiever Award, and we have Yvonne from the chamber here I believe, if, Yvonne, if you can approach, and if I can ask Supervisor Bishop to join her, just as soon as, there you go.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to come, my name is Yvonne Waitovich, I'm the President/CEO for the Kingman Area Chamber of Commerce, and on behalf of the chamber, we're really honored to be able to present Gene Bishop with the Lifetime Achiever Award for the 2015 Andy Awards. The Lifetime Achiever Award is given to a Kingman resident who has dedicated his or her life, year after year, to the advancement of Kingman and its citizens, and I think Gene is exemplary of that, so we're very proud to honor Gene with this award.
Thank you Yvonne, and I just wanted to take a moment to give my thanks to the Chamber of Commerce, to the awards committee, to my husband and to Mojave County, and that's one of the reasons why I think it's important to receive this award in front of my peers this morning since we are going to be talking about PTO and employee benefits. So this Andy Award exemplifies the fact that I've worked for Mojave County since I was 26 years old, and Mojave County has paid for my education, I've spent many, many hours of making Mojave County a better place to live, but I think it's important to know that lifelong employees such as myself are important to Mojave County, it's what keeps us growing and what makes us a wonderful place to live and a good place to work, so I just wanted to show my appreciation to the Board of Supervisors and to all of the Mojave County employees, so I shared this award with everyone, thank you so much.
Thank you very much Supervisor Bishop, and congratulations on your award. Next we have Mr. Dick Whittington from Golden Vertex, who can give us a Moss Mine Update. I hope he's going to say they've reconsidered and it really is my family mine.
I'm afraid we haven't gone that far yet.
We'll get there.
Anyway, first of all, thank you for having me speak today, Chairman Moss, Council, Board of Supervisors, I do have one thank you to you as well. My wife and I were the recipient of a turquoise plaque from Hildian, and the rest of the County Board of Supervisors at our Canada Day celebration on July 1, and I have to tell you that is very proudly displayed in my office, it's a beautiful piece of work, and thank you very much for sharing that with us, it was a great honor. Moving on to the project, I've sort of coined a phrase today, I've been asked a few times about the project, and the phrase that I've coined today is that "we're moving forward but we're standing still," and "how can that be?" you would say. Essentially, we're doing a lot of what I would call study work, back-room work, and there's nothing going on onsite. Onsite, we have care and maintenance for our project, we have proper security 24/7, and that security is ensuring the safety of the asset and obviously the continued safe use of our lands for public access, there's still public access through the patented private lands out at the Moss site. There've been two big developments in the last three, four months. The first one is the production of a feasibility study, that was produced in June, July, and that indicated that we have a very robust, economically robust, project out at the Moss Mine Site, so even with the reduction in the price of gold, which is definitely restricting our ability to access capital to build the mine, we do have a very solid project. So we are still very much here, we're still very much focused on moving the project forward, as I said, even though not a lot is happening out at site. The second really interesting aspect of what's happened recently is that Macquarie Bank of Australia have signed what's called an engagement letter with us, along with an indicative term sheet where they're willing to lend us $20 million to help build the mine. I do stress this is an indicative term sheet, there's still work that needs to go on, but it's still a very huge endorsement for the project, it's a huge endorsement for Bullhead City, and it's a huge endorsement for Mojave County. Macquarie Bank is not open for business. If you talk to people in the equity and the debt world, they will tell you Macquarie Bank, which is a very large mining bank, is not lending money. Well, they are interested in lending us money in your county and in Bullhead City, and I think this is really hats off to you and the environment that you've all created to encourage business in your county. So, right now we're looking at continuing to work with Macquarie, we've still got some work to do, we do not have what's called a lending letter from the bank yet, but I have been through this before, it takes time, it's a little pedantic, you have to dot the i's, cross the t's, it's going to take a couple of months, and then hopefully in January we'll be in a position where we have a full and final lending agreement for the mine, and then we'll be looking to go to the equity markets with a very strong endorsement from a major bank to also invest in the company. Obviously it's equity, it won't be debt, so it's a little different, but with the bank firmly in place, it obviously takes a lot of the stress, a lot of the tension out of the investment decision that people would make, and as you're well aware, I think every time I come to see you, the price of gold has gone down a little bit more from the last time, so it has gone down, but even so, as I say, we're still moving forward, the banks are interested in lending us money, even though nothing much is happening on the surface or out of sight. So that's my update, if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Whittington of Golden Vertex? I'll start with you Supervisor Johnson.
No questions Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes Chairman Moss, Mr. Whittington, you, even though your report is that things are kind of on hold, I want everyone to know that the Moss Mine and the Whittingtons' commitment to Bullhead City isn't, and they keep displaying their generosity, and if Lisa and McCabe will come up just for a moment, I want them to explain, we had a, in Bullhead City, we had something called Heritage Days, and part of that Heritage Days was the breaking, well, ribbon-cutting for the Little Red Schoolhouse, which is our, let Lisa explain it because she's going to go through this so much more than I have.
Okay, and I would be remiss, it's Whittington.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That is my error.
Yeah, the Little Red Schoolhouse, it was established in 1947, it was previously located behind the scenes so to speak, at Third and Lee Avenue in old Bullhead City, and Jillian Whittington actually came up with the concept of relocating that building into Community Park, the newly-established heritage center. Three years ago, two and a half years ago, the Moss Mine headframe was relocated there at the expense of Golden Vertex, and then we created a community task force, and over the last two and a half years raised about $160,000 of cash and in kind to relocate that schoolhouse. And it was truly a community project, and up until two days before the ribbon-cutting, I was getting calls from companies in the, in the community saying, "Why didn't you ask me? I want to be part of that." So it is a great addition to the park, and there is a bench that's dedicated to Jillian and Dick Whittington from the city of Bullhead City, proudly displayed in front of the schoolhouse. Thank you.
And it was a wonderful day and a wonderful event, and I urge everyone to go down to Community Park in Bullhead City and go tour the Little Red Schoolhouse because it's just a little walk down memory lane of the way things used to be, and they have everything the way it would have been back then, period pieces and desks, and it's just awesome, and plus sort of exhibits of pictures from that period, and it's a wonderful addition to our community.
Two additions, one, we even have a 48-star flag and an atlas listing the names of the countries as they were in 1947, and second, at the ribbon-cutting, we were blessed with the presence of two people who actually attended class in that, that building in 1948.
So thank you, and yes, yes, Mr. Whittington and Jillian, who have just, again, I can't convey what wonderful neighbors and additions they've been to our Bullhead City, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bishop, any questions?
I just want to say that I wasn't around in 1947, but I do know how difficult it is to move a historical building because I was part of that several years ago in chloride, so thank you very much for that undertaking, and I know how hard that was. I enjoy reading your, your releases that I see in the paper occasionally, and I know that you're very instrumental with a lot going on in the southern Mojave County area, so thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Watson?
I have no questions, thank you very much.
I'll just want to echo briefly, Mr. Whittington, to both you and your wife, and I was there at the dedication ceremony, so I know that she was, she took the lead on this, your efforts towards Bullhead City and Mojave County in general, and Golden Vortex's efforts are greatly appreciated, and you are, and you and your company are an example of how it should be done, and so thank you very much for all that you've done.
Thank you for having us in your community.
Thank you. Going on, Board of Supervisors Consent Agenda. The following items listed on our consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Can I have a motion, does anyone have anything they would like removed from the consent agenda, starting with Supervisor Johnson?
Item 22, Mr. Chairman.
Item 22, Supervisor Angus.
Nothing.
Supervisor Bishop?
Nothing.
Supervisor Watson?
Item number 25.
25, and I have nothing to remove, so may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items 22 and 25?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Going on to item 22, approve an I-40 industrial corridor water system invoice to Unisource Energy Services for approximately 37,271,000 gallons of unbilled water from July 2010 to June 2015, used by the Black Mountain Generating Station via Unisource's onsite and operated wells at $1.08 per thousand gallons representing one-half of its contract rate for I-40 water system supply, for a total invoice amount of $40,252.68, and further establish the Unisource I-40 water system account as settled for all water used through September 18, 2015, with go-forward recognition of the I-40 water system representing the Unisource primary supply up to the contract reserved amount. Supervisor Johnson, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, a motion for discussion?
Do we have a motion for discussion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have, I'll give that to Supervisor Bishop, since she's the lady to my right. Do all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, we've had a power outage and internet down, so I'm kind of waiting it here, but do we have somebody from Public Works who wants to answer a few questions?
We have Steve Lotosky who's approaching the podium.
Thank you.
Mr. Lotosky, the floor is yours.
I've got, the questions I have for you, Mr. Lotosky, is, as I sit here with no power, I'm wondering why it's taken five years for the power company to get around to paying us for our water? There's nobody else, I mean, if I owe them money, they don't carry me five years and then I negotiate with them. I mean, why is... I mean, why is the fact, I mean, I understand that, you know, it's already gone now, the five-year period or whatever, that they haven't paid, but why should we negotiate? Shouldn't they be paying us plus penalties for not paying us five years?
Supervisor Moss, members of the board, Supervisor Johnson, this issue concerning water demand by Unisource and their Black Mountain Generating Station was brought to our attention just through our casual review of the usage by Black Mountain relative to what we would normally see for a peak generating station. And it was really unknown to us that Black Mountain had used substantially less. They purchased only about 2.1 million gallons in the five years from 2010, when they first connected to the water system through the present, that they only took 2.1 million gallons from I-40 relative to their actual use at over 39 million gallons. We don't, as the I-40 Water District operators, we do not have knowledge on exactly how much water the peaking generating station is drawing. What happened was, Unisource, and rightfully so, they have a redundant well production system, they actually have two wells onsite that they have the opportunity to use. However, our Water Services Agreement with Unisource establishes the I-40 water system as the primary provider up to the 125 gallon per minute reserved amount. And what Unisource, in their words, inadvertently did was they proceeded to continue to draw from their own wells, and there's a certain expense incurred withdrawing from your own wells without taking from the water system. And it really was a formal inquiry by the Public Works Department into how much water the Unisource Energy peaking station was actually taking that precipitated this finding over the last five years. So Unisource's position was, they did this inadvertently, they did not understand all of the terms of the contract, especially as it pertained to the I-40 water system providing first priority water service, unless there was some undue issue where we had to shift our priority to Griffith, that never really occurred over the last five years. And we met with Unisource officials on the matter just recently, and now we're at this point where we're attempting to settle the usage of over 37 million gallons of water that Unisource took from their own wells without taking it from the water system.
Though, in the contract, if I read it correctly, we have a meter there, correct?
Supervisor Johnson, correct, yes, there's a meter.
Doesn't that meter report to us? I mean, are we state-of-the-art like we are in everything else out in Griffiths where it should be reported to us every month, exactly how much water is being used or not used?
Supervisor Johnson, good question. The meter will only report to us how much water Unisource Energy took from the I-40 water system. We have no meters or access to information on how much water is taken from Unisource's own private wells onsite.
Correct. I guess that's all I had, Mr. Chairman, but I think if we had an agreement and spend five years, they need to at least pay us, you know, what to do as a system. Thank you, Mr. Lutowski.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson, thank you, Ms. Lutowski. Does any other board member have a question for Mr. Lutowski? All right, having none, can I have a motion on item 22?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Supervisor Bishop.
I'll make a motion to approve, item 43, or, I'm sorry, item 22.
22, is there a second?
Second motion.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. This, in time for the further discussion. Supervisor Johnson, I think you tried to say something?
No, that's fine, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It's four to one, I believe, in favor of item 22. Going on to item 25, approve the appointment of Douglas Schuster as Justice of the Peace Magistrate Pro Tem for the Mojave County Limited Jurisdiction Courts according to Administrative Order 2015-32. I believe this was pulled by Supervisor Watson, Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, I'd like to have a motion for discussion.
I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just wanted to take this opportunity to point out an outstanding individual with the long tenure at Mojave County Sheriff's Office. Mr. Schuster came to Mojave County Sheriff's Office a number of years ago and was risen through the ranks and is an outstanding individual, and I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Doug Schuster, Justice of the Peace, Magistrate Pro Tem from Mojave County Limited Jurisdiction Courts according to the Administrative Order 2015-32.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Supervisor Johnson, you were saying?
The only question I have, and we all know, you know, Schuster's background, but there was no backup for the public in here, which we usually have of their history that usually comes in, and, I mean, I'll go ahead and support the movement, even though I believe he's taking a step down from the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second from Supervisor Bishop, we have comments from Supervisor Johnson, are there any other comments?
I'll just like to make a comment if I may.
Sure.
I've known Doug Schuster for 20, maybe 30 years, and he's an outstanding person, he's trustworthy, I'm sorry there wasn't any backup information to show all of his accolades, but he's a good person and I think he's well qualified for this position.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Going on to item 32, I'm opening the public hearing on the adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2015-154 zoning use permit on Assessor's Parcel Number 229-18-022 to allow a residence and residential accessory structure in a C2 general commercial zone in the South Mojave Valley vicinity, south of Jill Way and north of Valencia Road between Cathy and Lynn Drive, Mojave County, Arizona. The Commission recommended approval by a unanimous vote. Is there anyone here to speak on item 32 of the agenda? The public hearing is now open. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. May I have a motion on item 32 of the agenda?
Motion to approve item 32.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Going on to item 33, I am opening the public hearing for discussion of possible action array adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2015-155 zoning use permit on Assessor's Parcel Number 254-31-013J to allow a wireless communication facility which includes 190-foot tower and three 1,000-gallon above-ground fuel tanks in a C-2H-5A general commercial highway, five-acre minimum lot size zone in the Silverado vicinity, west of US Highway 93, at mile marker 93 between Crazy Horse Road and Feria Road, Mojave County, Arizona. The Commission also recommended approval with conditions that the address noise and safety issues by unanimous vote. On item 33, I have two people signed up to speak. The public hearing is open, and if John Lutensky of Kingman, Arizona, could step on down and share comments with the board, you'll have three minutes.
My name is John Lutensky and I reside at 11290 East San River Ranch Road. I noticed that it says "Commission recommended approval with conditions that the address noise, the address noise, safety issues" with a unanimous vote. I was at the zoning meeting and we covered it pretty thoroughly, but in the past, I have to keep coming and stating that we need to use common sense when we approve zoning issues, we need to look at people's track records, we want to make sure that if we have provisos on these zoning issues, that somebody other than the citizens who are not county employees check up on and make sure that these safety issues are taken care of, or zoning issues such as three 1,000-gallon tanks of diesel fuel. If for some reason they break, are the berms in place and will it hold that and not going to into the big sandy acrofer and affect the whole southern part of the state? If there's a fire, is somebody able to quickly respond to it? If there is noise, is it going to affect somebody in the county zoning department or in the board that will make sure that the noise gets taken care of? At the hearing, we discussed possible power coming into that unit and not having to run a generator every week or whatever to charge the batteries or to do standby power. I represent a committee in the area at Citizens for Progress. Nobody's against this, except that if you put 190-foot tower on a 70-foot mountain or 100-foot hill, that all of a sudden it becomes bigger. They're not going to put lights on it, they say, I want to make sure that somebody checks these things. I know the gentleman, he's very cordial to the provisions that were made on this zoning issue, but I would like to make sure and remind everybody that somebody has to check up on it besides the poor individual that's going to live next to that tower and nobody's going to listen to if there is a problem. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. We also have signed up to speak RG Bishop. Mr. Bishop, if you can come down and share your thoughts with the board, you have three minutes.
Good morning, RG Bishop, 251 North Friendship Pass in Kingman, Arizona. I wanted to reiterate what John had to say earlier, but two specific items were asked that we haven't seen any response to, and maybe they'll talk about it today when the issue comes up. Who is going to be providing emergency response to a fuel spill, we're assuming it's alarmed in some way, or a fire to that area? That's really an issue of concern because, as you know, there are not a lot of emergency response sites in that area. That's all really I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. The public meeting is still open, is there anyone else who would like to speak on item 33 of the agenda before I close the public meeting? Seeing none, I will close the public meeting as to item 33. May I have a motion on item 33 of the agenda?
Yes, Chairman Moss. If I could please, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to table this item for at least two weeks or possibly one month to find out the answers to the emergency response item on whether, who is responsible and where that emergency response would come from in case there is a fuel spill at this location. So I think it's a valid point, I think we should find out the answers to that and find out who the responsible party would be.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to continue this up to 30 days, which I assume would be two meeting dates.
Right.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Going on to item 34, I am opening the public meeting for discussion of possible action array adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2015-156, extension of a time for a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Numbers 254-31-008C-009F-009G-254-33-004A-005B-011C from A-R10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone to a C-2H-10A general commercial highway frontage 10-acre minimum lot size zone in the Silverado vicinity, east of US Highway 93, between Highway Valley Drive and Hackberry Road, Mojave County, Arizona. The Commission recommended denial by a unanimous vote. We have two people signed up to speak on this issue. I'll start with John Lutensky, Mr. Lutensky.
Thank you, John Lutensky, 11290 East San River Ranch Road. I appreciate the time to speak on this. This is one of the things that I've been coming here over and over about using common sense and looking at the track record of the people who want zoning changes in an agriculture residential area. We don't need people coming in, changing the zoning, making sure that the property is zoned commercial, then they go out fishing, and it may sound ludicrous to you that they sell the property to a pig farmer or whatever, and then the poor people who live in the area and the rezoning that it affects have to live with these decisions. I believe wholeheartedly that the board is really trying here as of late to try and stay on top of these people who don't do what they say they're going to do, don't do it when they're supposed to do it, and if they do do it, they do it half-heartedly. And I'm very happy to see that finally we're going to get this denied. I don't know how many extensions have been given here. When the I-11 corridor comes through, let them come down, present their case. I-11 coming through, let them zone, put it in a popcorn stand, I don't care, but zone it then. This business of zoning property to commercial in an agriculture residential area where the residents have to have the gamble of putting up with these people and not knowing what's going to happen the following month or a month after that is very unnerving for people who are on fixed incomes, and that's the only place they have to live, and you have people in the area trying to rezone the commercial to go fishing, to bring in something other than what belongs in the area. And I appreciate the time and I encourage you to vote no on the extension because they've had way too many and they don't do what they say they're going to do, and they absolutely don't do anything when they say they're going to do it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lutensky. We next have signed to speak Mr. RG Bishop, Mr. Bishop.
Good morning again, RG Bishop, I still live at 251 North Friendship Pass. I'm very encouraged by the fact that the Planning and Zoning Committee has spent a great deal of time going through the records of what, between they and the Board of Supervisors has approved over the years to look for expansion of business in the area, and we're very encouraged at the fact that they have followed up on the recommendation from the Board of Supervisors and that the Board of Supervisors had said reluctantly on a couple of occasions, okay, we'll give you one more extension, but this is it. And so I'm very happy that this is coming up for denial today, and I strongly encourage you to stop this ludicrous action. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bishop. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on item 34 of the agenda before I close the public meeting? Seeing none, I close the public meeting on item 34 of the agenda. May I have a motion on item 34 of the agenda?
Chairman Moss, if I may, this is in my district, I'd like to make a motion for the denial of the adoption of the Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2015-156 for the extension of time for a rezone.
So the motion, just to make sure I'm clear, is to deny the rezone?
That is correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Going on to item 35 of the agenda, I'm opening the public hearing on discussion of possible action array adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2015-157, rescind and causes of property to revert from a M/36A general manufacturing 36-acre minimum lot size zone to the previous zone of A, general five-acre minimum lot size for failure to meet the conditions of approval as specified in Board of Supervisor Resolution Numbers 201-315, 2003-365, and 2005-219, which conditionally approved the rezoned Assessor Parcels Numbers 317-49-032 in the White Hills vicinity, west of US Highway 93 and south of White Hills Road Extension, Mojave County, Arizona. The Commission had recommended approval by unanimous vote. We have, I'm opening the public hearing, we have Mr. Lutensky, I'm here to speak on this again, Mr. Lutensky.
John Lutensky, 11290 East San River Ranch Road, and I would really like to stop meeting like this, so I hope you do rescind this. This goes back to all the previous times I've been here to speak. This goes back to all the previous times I've been here to speak. I don't have any notes on these issues, but I really do appreciate the board and the zoning department, Ms. Ballard, paying attention to the public and the people who are being subjected to the bad track records of the people who are subjecting us to MX and all these other fly-by-night schemes for jobs that would not appear anyway. I don't mind jobs coming into the county and I don't mind people approving jobs, but they can't be fictitious things where there's only a building thing and the people in the area get subjected to too many problems that go into here in a few minutes. But I really encourage you and thank you to do the right thing and look out for the non-county employees, the people who are on fixed income and in these areas where somebody has a great idea, it sounds good, looks good, but then their track records always come up and they don't do what they say they're going to do, they don't do it when they're supposed to do it, and there's nobody to enforce the rules and they keep getting extensions. So, I appreciate this and I appreciate zoning helping us and the board, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lutensky. We also have signed to speak Mr. Bishop.
I'm still Mr. Bishop. I still live at the same address, and I don't mind meeting with you. Over the last year, I've had the fine opportunity to work for, to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission on a number of projects, and they're a bunch of hard-working folks. They don't get paid enough to deal with people like me and John. And I want to applaud this effort as yet another fine, outstanding example of following through with trying to fix problems that have been created. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bishop. Is there any other person who would like to speak on the public hearing portion of item 35 of the agenda? Seeing none, I'm closing item 35 of the agenda. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor Bishop.
This one's in my area, so I will make an motion to approve item 35 by rescinding Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2015-157 for failure to meet the conditions of approval.
So, we have a motion to rescind as approved by the commission. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Going on to item 36 of the agenda. I am now opening the public hearing discussion of possible action ray adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2015-158, rezone of assessor's parcel number 206-12-006 from an A, general 5-acre minimum lot size zone, to AR, agricultural residential 1-acre minimum lot size, and C2, general commercial zones, to allow residential and commercial development in the Kingman City west of I-40 and Oatman Road, north of Shinnawump Drive, Mojave County, Arizona. The commission had recommended approval by unanimous vote. I'm opening the public hearing. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak on item 36 before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, I am closing the public hearing on item 36. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion, want to approve item 36, Board of Supervisors' Resolution 2015-158 for a rezone.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Going on to item 37. I am opening the public hearing for discussion of possible action ray adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2015-159, zoning use permit on assessor's parcel number 332-14-015 to allow a secondary residence in an AR/2.5A agricultural residential 2.5-acre minimum lot size zone in the Kingman vicinity, Red Wing Canyon, between Bradley Avenue and May Lane, Mojave County, Arizona. The commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I'm opening the public hearing on item 37. I have one person signed up to speak. That is Karen Savage. Ms. Savage?
It's okay. I just.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Savage. I'm, any other persons who would like to speak on this item? Item 37. Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing on item 37. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item 37, but the zoning use permit approved.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Going on to item 38. I'm opening the public hearing, sitting as the Board of Directors of the Horizon Six Improvement District for discussion of possible action, adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2015-16, approving the petitions for addition to the Horizon Six Improvement District located in the Lake Havasu City area of Mojave County, Arizona. I have one person, two people, signed up to speak on item 38. This is also under Mr. Lutoski's name, so I will let Mr. Lutoski give the first presentation and then I'll call up the people who would like to speak. Or would you prefer to do it the other way, Mr. Lutoski?
I'm available for questions.
Okay, let's take the comments first from Mr. Fred Barlow. Mr. Barlow.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My address is 4027 Window Rock Road. I have a few handouts regarding this, if that's available to give to the board members.
If you could, just step up to the clerk and she'll pass them down to us. Thank you very much.
Real briefly, I am one of the property owners of the five additional properties requesting to have water from the Horizon Six Water District. We're expressing that this is just going to be a benefit to the system with very little impact. The main reason that we can be a benefit is that we'll increase the revenues even in the form of maybe a impact fee if need be to help that district area. We're willing to, versus each one of us going and putting in our own well. We were originally going to do just a shared well, but after reviewing some of the system, the wonderful staff of your Public Works and your engineers, Tim Walsh and Lutoski, have encouraged some of the infrastructure type of approach. Instead of each of us having our own well, if we support the local water district system and it's right there in front of our property, then it's a better overall quality of water and it's better maintained. And also, myself, I'm a firefighter and I prefer to invest my money into the water system so that if that need ever comes for fire suppression, then it helps versus each one of us having our own well and none of us have fire flow for an emergency. I know there were some concerns with elevations and all that, and we're willing to take the water meters even right at the property line of Window Rock Road, as shown on the map, the very end one, the bottom there is Window Rock Road, and that's our five properties there. And even if we took our meters at that location, we would have much better water quality and water flow than you could get out of a well. And that's right in the area. I've already put one well in, but one's not enough for all of our lots, and so we're looking at doing a second well, and that's when they're saying, "Hey, why don't you just support the local system that's here?" And even one three-quarter inch water tap would be better than what you're going to get out of your best well. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, sir. We also have signed up to speak Stephanie Lydick. Ms. Lydick, if you would approach. If I miss, is it Lydic or Lydi?
It's Lydic.
Lydic, I'm sorry. That's why if you could please state your name and address to make sure the chairman did not mess it up.
No worries. My name is Stephanie Lydic, and I'm also a resident of Lake Havasu City. I'm at 4037 East Window Rock. For a little over a year now, my husband and I have actually been hauling water. Our animals are located on that property. Due to the challenges that come with hauling water, extreme heat in Lake Havasu, the lack of popularity of hauling water in Havasu, it's been very difficult. Because of that, we've decided we need to put a halt on building our new home. We have plans ready. We're ready to go. We just need to make sure we have a good water supply. So, with that, I would like to respectfully request that y'all will add us to the Horizon Six Water District. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Before I close the public hearing on item 38, is there any other person who would like to speak on this item? Then I will close the public hearing on item 38. Mr. Lutoski, do you have any comments you would like to make on this issue? Or is there any board members who have a question for Mr. Lutoski?
No.
Looks like you're not going to be needed, Mr. Lutoski. Can I have a motion? I'm closing the public hearing on item 38. Can I have a motion? I'll move that we approve item 38 of the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor Johnson.
The problems I have with this, the city is in the process of annexation right up to the property that is approaching us at this time, this hook into the Horizon Six Water District. We're getting ready to improve that system again. I know the one gentleman talked about they might like an impact fee, but the lots that are out there have paid for that. These lots, and I'm not sure if these owners were part of it at the time, were asked to contribute to the road. They all refused to pay for the road that they're now using. I think the best thing would be for them to apply to the city and use the city water because that's where Horizon Six gets theirs. Those are all my comments.
So, if I understand what you're saying, Supervisor Johnson, you think that we should deny item 38 and suggest that the homeowners who signed the petition apply to the city?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. We have any further discussion? Okay. Mr. Lutoski, do you have any commentary on that?
Chairman Moss, members of the board, I do have an exhibit that shows the current pending annexation that is being contemplated by the city. It has not gone through yet, and I do understand City Council has approved the annexation action going to a public hearing process, which is yet to unfold. I just placed on the table the proposed annexation. The properties in pink are the ones that the city are being proposed to bring into the city. The aqua-colored parcels represent the five parcels which are petitioning to be included in the Horizon Six Improvement District.
So, the annexation would not include the parcels which are before us today?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Is there any further questions or comments for Mr. Lutoski? Seeing none, all in favor of approving item 38 of the agenda, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
It's approved by four to one. Going on to the regular agenda at the request of the treasurer, can I have a motion that we move item 46 and 47 to the front of the agenda? These are time-sensitive items, and she will need the balance of the time today to get whatever we give instructions on approved.
Chairman Moss, I move that we move item 46, 47 to the top of this agenda.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Going on to item 46, and for the edification of the public and our people out in front of us, that means item 39 will follow item 47, and that's where we'll pick up. Item 46, discussion of possible action ray, the approval of a preliminary distribution of $3,388,751.75 of proceeds in the Mineral Park Mine Bankruptcy settlement to the related authorities as further detailed in the backup. This is starred for the executive session. Is there any board member who would like to have this heard in executive session? Seeing none, we'll do it in public meeting. The, if you can, this is under Supervisor Johnson's name. Would you like to take the leadoff, Supervisor Johnson, on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason I placed this on the agenda, it was placed on and pulled off before to do a settlement. Mojave County Board of Supervisors, in my opinion, is the only one who can do the settlement. This cannot go through the treasurer's office for settlement. They can make the recommendations to the board for distribution, but Mojave County entities sued on behalf of all Mojave County residents and taxing jurisdictions, so the board has the ultimate jurisdiction, I believe, to do any kind of distribution of funds. And looking through the funds, the one thing that I noticed was missing, or maybe the treasurer can explain it if it's already included in there, but for the excess work that our people put into the lawsuit, which we funded, we're not getting reimbursed for that. Now, we do charge these districts for legal representation and doing the assessor parcels and that sort of thing, but anything above, beyond that, we should be reimbursed for. If it's not included, I think that we need to recoup the cost of staff time that went into this lawsuit. That was my idea, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Supervisor Johnson. Do we have Treasurer Cox available? I'll turn the floor over to you, Treasurer Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisors and staff, good morning. The Board of Supervisors approved the Mineral Park Mine Settlement, and they were provided a legal opinion reducing the settlement cost by the settlement amount by costs, fees, and expenses incurred prior to the distribution. So, I went up to Bill Ekstrom's office, our county attorney's representative, and he said, "There is no further action that the board needs to take. You calculate what it is, make sure all the expenses are taken out, and distribute the money because our districts," what I said to him was, "Our districts are screaming for that money and we're holding it." This is a very critical time for our districts. So, he advised, and this is what the email says, "There is no need for further board action." So, I moved based on that.
We have Supervisor Johnson's comments, we have Treasurer Cox's comments. Does anyone else have any questions for anyone involving this item? Supervisor Ingers? Supervisor Bishop?
No.
Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Moss. I believe Supervisor Johnson has made the proper assessment and bringing this back. And if there, for some reason, staff time was lost due to this suit, it should have been included in the assessment that was given to the treasurer prior to the distribution plan. So, with that, I'd like to make a recommendation for the motion to approve the preliminary distribution of $3,388,751.75 of proceeds from Mineral Park Mine Bankruptcy settlement to the related authorities as further detailed in the attachment.
Can I just add to that as well? There was a $100,000 holdback just particularly for these items.
Okay.
It was 3.4 million, and we distributed 3.3 because I wanted to make sure that all the bills that were, that came to the county were paid. And we have accounted for everything except for what I know of is about $5,000, so.
Okay.
So, there's an extra $35,000, so.
Thank you very much, Treasurer Cox.
Thank you.
We have a motion. We do not yet have a second. Supervisor Johnson?
Yes, I had a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Treasurer Cox mentioned that she's accounted for all staff time. Are you telling me that all staff time that went into not just what we, the percentage that we have, but all staff time that went in from the treasurer's office, bureau office, all reimbursements for county manager's office, I know they are involved in things, that has been accounted for and paid back?
Treasurer Cox.
There was a spreadsheet that I attached to the backup of the item that I had put on the agenda prior to speaking with Mr. Ekstrom. And on it, it has all of the, listed the surcharge for the debtor's motion, the attorney fees, the pre-contingent fee agreement, the BDO consulting, which was our specialist, our, I can't think of the word, expert witness testimonies. And the travel expenses were the only thing that was identified to me. And then, I was not told of any other costs, and I'm not aware of any other costs that were related to Mr. Hendricks' office. This came from Yolanda, I'm sorry, Yvonne Orr, from Mr. Hendricks' office, county administrator's office, that this was all the costs that were incurred.
Is Mr. Nicholson there in our session?
Mr. Hendricks is here, as is Attorney Hendricks. Oh, I'm sorry. I demoted you, Attorney Ekstrom.
What about the assessor, is he there? I know he put a lot of hours.
Is there anyone from the assessor's office here? No, there is not.
That's my only thing, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to beat it, but I know that we have a lot of hours and I'm being capped.
Okay. Thank you very much, Supervisor Johnson. Is there a second for Supervisor Watson's motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. I have one. I have one question as part of the discussion, if I could, just to make sure I could clarify. Treasurer Cox, we have retained $100,000?
Correct.
So we're only just, we're just bringing everything but $100,000?
Correct.
Okay. And it's in order, and I will leave this, and if we do have expenses which have not yet been discovered or accounted for, we could, we could tap that fund.
Absolutely.
All right. That's all I have. We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Going on to item 47 of the agenda, discussion of possible action, Ray, accept the County Attorney's opinion regarding acceptance of cash at satellite offices and direct the Treasurer to make arrangements for the acceptance of cash or abandon the plan for satellite offices. Treasurer Cox? This is under your name, so I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you again. Good morning again. I want to again express my support for providing satellite office operations, preferably on a full-time basis, but it is an, it is not an inexpensive proposition and not viewed as critical during these trying economic times for Mojave County taxpayers, as was evidenced by the Board of Supervisors' closure of the Lake Havasu and Bullhead City Satellite Offices in 2008. I have considered many options, including extension offices through Mojave Community College on their campuses, but I must consider our bare-bones budget that was cut $188,000 in this year's adopted budget. As Treasurer, I'm elected to bill, collect, and invest tax dollars on behalf of all Mojave County taxpayers, providing the highest quality of service for the lowest possible cost. Under UMAC, which is the Uniform Accounting Manual for Arizona County Treasurers, which I'm required, it's written by the Auditor General, I'm required to adhere to, the introduction says, "For accounting procedures, because of the relatively high risk associated with transactions involving cash, strict internal controls, policies, and procedures are required. The Treasurer has the responsibility to establish and enforce policies to ensure that adequate internal control exists for receiving, recording, safeguarding, and distributing cash." That is the number-one reason why I've made the decision that I did, and informed you 18 months ago that we were no longer going to take cash after I received the opinion from the County Attorney's Office that that was not, not an issue. I feel that I fulfilled these obligations since my election, and I will continue to achieve the highest level of service that includes a safe, comfortable environment for both Treasury employees and the public. The Treasurer's Office chose not to accept cash at the temporary satellite offices in Lake Havasu and Bullhead Cities over a year ago as a result of advice from our risk management, who confirmed my reservations about lack of security in these single-staffed offices. This was supported by the County Attorney's Office and communicated to the Board of Supervisors by memorandum. It was the opinion of the risk management, and I had held from the beginning of my term that we should provide the same level of security at the satellite offices as we do here at the Kingman County seat. As Treasurer, my position has not changed. If there is a legal requirement to accept cash, then we must provide the same level of security at the satellite offices as we do in the Kingman office, including full video surveillance, currency counters, check scanners, counterfeit detection, print capability, two-employee minimum, armed guards, security, safes, Lewis pickup, and bulletproof glass. Keep in mind, it is not just the physical security at issue, but the support of all of these items to assist the cashier in proving innocence on overages and shortages. Considering that there are only two weeks to try and accommodate this effort, I recommend at this point the satellite offices not be open until the second half payment due dates in April 2016, at which time we will have determined the cost for the Board of Supervisors, so you can approve it and implement the necessary changes if approved. Other than opening the offices without the cash option, as originally budgeted and planned, I'm hard-pressed to support any other option. It would be up to the Board of Supervisor to approve and accept the responsibility for any compromises and provide the budget and additional staff requirements.
Is that all you have, Supervisor Cox? Supervisor, Treasurer Cox?
I love that you keep promoting us.
Ah, it's, we're all just public servants.
But I don't want to be a supervisor, thanks. Thanks a lot, Supervisor Moss.
So we have Ms. Treasurer Cox's comments, we have the letter from Attorney Ekstrom. Do we have any other comments from the board? I'll start with you, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first thing I would disagree with the Treasurer on, the Board of Supervisors never shut down the satellite offices. That was done by a previous Treasurer as a purely political move to punish the outlying areas. We have nothing to do with that. The Treasurer's autonomous, they come, they have the people, they moved all those people they had to the Kingman Office. They didn't have layoffs. So I believe it's up to the Treasurer to provide the services. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Angus?
Well, since we asked for an attorney's opinion and we got it, and if the Treasurer says that it is not feasible for her to do that, I, I don't know what else we can do.
Okay. Supervisor Bishop?
I have to echo Supervisor Angus. If we can't provide the, the security and all the items to make the satellite offices as safe as the main office, I, I think the, the common sense approach would be to close those offices and, and unless there is an alternative, that we did speak to Chuck Gertler about maybe having the Treasurer's Office use a court window with, with the satellite courts. So if, if Mr. Gertler was, was able to come up with a remedy there, that might be a solution.
Thank you, Supervisor Bishop. Supervisor Watson?
I'd like to hear what Judge Gertler and Mr. Anderson might have to address.
So would I. Judge Gertler, Presiding Judge Gertler.
May please, Chairman, Board members, Counsel, and Ministry of Staff, I believe that we're going to have to obtain a legal opinion from Dave Withy, who is the Legal Counsel for the AOC. The Court is required to meet general accepting accounting principles. We have to report to the AOC every year with minimum accounting standards, which I believe is truly an oxymoron, because the reports are, you know, well in excess of 20 pages long, they're audited, the Supreme Court comes back and, you know, tells us of, you know, any discrepancies or any, you know, action areas. You know, the potential for co-mingling of funds might be the issue, and obviously, we would not be, you know, in a position to open up a window if in fact that is a, an issue with, with the AOC. I can certainly ask for a legal opinion from Mr. Withy, request that he do it on an expedited basis. This did come up, and I did appreciate the Supervisor's call as a heads-up. Unfortunately, given the fact that it came in on Friday, it was, you know, I have not had enough or sufficient time to, you know, follow up, and I would certainly ask for Lynn, if she has any comments concerning the issues as well, or our Clerk of the Court.
Our Clerk, Verlin Tenell.
Thank you. And we really haven't had a chance to vet this at all, and perhaps if there's a five-minute break sometime, we could discuss this and figure out how it would work. I know that the judge asked me late Friday if I had any concerns about it, and I have more questions than I have concerns. We do have a window that would be available, morning hours at both the satellite locations. We do have cameras, we do have security in the building. It would just be a matter of talking to the Treasurer and finding out exactly what her needs would be, because I don't know what her minimum, minimum accounting standards are versus what we have, so there wouldn't be two employees of her office there, so I don't know if that would work for her or not. Likewise, they'd have to have their own laptop or whatever else. So just, you know, some questions I would have that I, I just couldn't answer to either you or the Presiding Judge at this time.
As an example, we would not be able to place cash in our safe. That is the potential right there for the co-mingling of funds. So, you know, Verlin's suggestion that, you know, we take a few minutes, if you could trail this, you know, maybe Treasurer Cox and Mr. Anderson and Ms. Tenell and I can speak and give you something better to work with.
Um.
Because we certainly do understand and appreciate the need, especially for the outlying areas, to, you know, be able to come in and, and, you know, take care of their property tax obligations, and we don't want someone running delinquent and looking at a certificate of purchase, sale, or, you know, as well as just simply, you know, helping the county finances so that we don't have a, you know, a default rate that's higher than what it is.
Are you suggesting, Presiding Judge Gertler, that we continue this till after 39 on the agenda and give you time to speak, or are you suggesting to the next meeting?
Well, I think that.
After 39?
After 39. Excellent. Can I have a motion to continue this item till after item 39?
Can I say something about that?
Absolutely, Treasurer Cox.
Thank you. Two weeks, that's all we have. So the first thing that we have to consider is regardless of the accommodations that, that I really appreciate Judge Gertler and Verlin offering, we also do not have staff. So where are we going to get the staff that knows how to use my system?
Well, we're gonna, we have a motion to continue this till after item, we have a motion. Do we have a motion to continue this till after item 39 of the agenda?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Discussing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Supervisor Johnson?
I guess I'm not seeing why we're continuing this till later for more discussion. This isn't our, our problem to solve, this is the Treasurer's problem to solve. I mean, if we want to continue it, that's fine, but the Treasurer's autonomous, and how she runs her office is her business unless we have a, you know, something we see that's illegal she's doing, but it's up to her to find a way to, you know, provide this service to the people. I mean, she has 22 people, I believe, you know, not counting the two we just gave her, you know, to run during this time. I mean, we have, Public Works collects money, everyday cash money, the health, health people collect money, our permitting, everything else. I don't see the problem, but if we want to continue it and solve her, try to solve her problems, okay.
Well, thank you very much, Supervisor Johnson.
Can I say something?
Yes, Supervisor Angus.
Okay. So if I'm hearing correctly, it's up to the Treasurers, according to Supervisor Johnson, it's really her decision to make. She's already told us she does not have staff, so even if the courts are amenable and can make the venue happen, it seems like it can't happen. She's already told us her decision is not to have these satellite offices, you know, and everything that goes along with that. So I, I just, I don't understand why we would even, you know, waste anyone's time if, obviously, it cannot happen.
Well, my thoughts are, we should let the court staff and the Treasurer discuss, so we can get additional information in just a few moments. They can, but there's a way around this, that would be great. If it's the issue is another employee, I believe each of those court windows has many employees sitting behind them, so that county employee, the Treasurer's employee, and the judicial employees are both receiving paychecks from the same area. So I'd really like to see what they can do to solve this problem for our constituents in Havasu and Bullhead and Fort Mojave and elsewhere. So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor to pick this up after item 39 of the agenda?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
3-2, it's continued till after item 39 of the agenda. We greatly appreciate it if the court staff and the Treasurer would have a few minutes of conversation, and we'll get back to you. Thank you very much, folks. Item 39, discussion of possible action, Ray, presentation of proposals developed to address the PTO portion of the proposed Mojave County personnel policies and procedures. This is continued from our August 17 meeting. I have three people signed up to speak on item 39. First is Sheriff Jim McCabe.
Mr. Chairman, Board and Staff, thank you. Good morning. Supervisor Watson, I would like to thank you for your kind words this morning about search and rescue. In effect, all of the Board has reached out in the last couple of months and, and recognized the fact that, boy, they're just a really good asset. And you combine that with the staff I have at the Department and the staff we have with the county, it makes for a great team effort. And that's kind of what I want to talk about today, is a little bit of a, a team effort on item 39 as it pertains to PTO. We, the county has spent a great deal of time discussing this issue, and as it should be, because it's a very important issue. And initially, it came out, of course, that the current employees were going to be having hours swept from their accounts and such, and I reached out to all the Board members on two occasions during that period of time, and got assurances from all of you that, no, that's not what you're looking to do, and I commend you on your, your stance. I know you could have done something different, but you did what was right, and that, that's very commendable. You know, I, I can't really argue the fact that the PTO is excessive. Boy, it's a lot of hours there. And frankly, as a department head, as sheriff, as a manager of people, it makes it a little difficult, because I don't want those people to lose hours, so you give them the vacation at the end of the year so it doesn't get swept, and next thing you know, you're, you're suffering with a lot of people off. So it's a hard management tool, but what I want to talk about mostly is why we got that way. You know, I've been with the county for 31 years now, and, boy, I've seen it all pretty much. I've seen the amount of hours that you can pull over past the end of the year from 240 up to 1,300 and back down again, and where it looks like we're going back down some more. I've seen PTO as, as separated from PTO time off and, and sick time off and separating that for whatever reason, I don't really know, and then it changes back, and then it changes back again. And, and everything that we're thinking about and we're talking about currently is something that's already been done, and you can look back in the history of that and make a determination as what the future may be. The PTO and the sick time, it's just really a, a bit of a management nightmare between the staff of each department and finance and HR. It just makes it more difficult. It also encourages people to call in, call in sick so they can take a long weekend. And I'd rather have it planned so I can know what I'm doing than have somebody call in and say, "Oh, got to take that time." The reason the, the hours of recruitment are so high is because Mojave County used it as a benefit. They were never able to give the cash that was really a fair market wage. So what they did for retention and recruitment was give a better, better package in vacation. And some people this really, you know, appeals to. So the, the reason it's there is because we're lacking in other areas. So my argument would be, we're looking at something that we're going to be taking away from employees, something that a lot of them find to be a great benefit, but we're not looking at what we're going to do to reward those employees in other ways, like a fair market wage. We're not competitive. We've not been given raises. Give the raises, give the money, take the time, but don't do both. I, I spoke about how we're successful together, and I really mean that. I think each one of you have a district that you're responsible to, your constituents in, and I admire that and I respect that. I have a county of all of your constituents I'm responsible for, and I need everyone sitting at this desk today to help support me in getting the resources that I need to go out to your resources, your constituents. You may have recently read Phoenix PD, they're hiring 300 people, I think I sent it to some people out. Clark County Commissioners, about three weeks ago, approved a quarter cent sales tax to go towards law enforcement, to hire more people on. All of the areas, and I have done a pretty extensive study that I, I told some Board members that I would prepare, it actually is completed, I just have to do a cover letter and send it out, where it shows where, I compare it to the cities within the county and, as well as Yavapai County, which is as close to our size as I could find here in Arizona. And what it shows is, we're behind the ball. We can't continue to do that. I ask you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Sheriff McCabe. Next, we have Lisa Samstag, who wants to speak on behalf of Matt Smith, our Mojave County Attorney. Ms. Samstag?
Good morning, Chairman Moss and Supervisors. Mr. Smith couldn't be here today, so I asked that I read this letter on his behalf. Dear Board of Supervisors, I'm writing in support of my previous position on the employee benefits package that I discussed at the last Supervisor's meeting. I wanted to thank the Board for its careful consideration of all these issues that are so important to our employees. On my 28th anniversary as a Mojave County employee, I would like to see the Board continue to keep the PTO package remain as it is for all existing employees. Furthermore, I believe that our budget problems can be solved through employee attrition. I believe that our employees are our most important and valuable I believe that our employees are our most important and valuable asset, and I believe the existing employees have the right to rely on the benefits package that they were promised at the start of their employment. It would be fair to change the PTO package for employees starting with the county in the future, as those employees would have noticed of the benefits they would be receiving, and then it could be reviewed after one year. Let us continue to protect our most valuable employees and show them the respect they have earned. I thank you for your attention and consideration. Matthew J. Smith, Mojave County Attorney. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have signed up to speak Mr. Bill Whiting. Mr. Whiting. Thank you, Mr. Whiting.
You're welcome. I've been here a few times. Good morning Chairman Moss and Board of Supervisors. My name is Bill Whiting. I reside at twenty-five thirty Thompson Avenue, Kingman, Arizona. I have three minutes to speak, and this is what I'm going to speak. Please leave and keep the current PTO policy intact for the current employees. Please leave and keep the current PTO policy intact for the current employees. Please keep and leave the current PTO policy intact for the current employees. Please leave and keep the current PTO policy intact for the current employees. Please keep and leave the current PTO policy intact for the current employees. Please keep and leave the current PTO policy intact for the current employees. Please leave and keep the PTO policy intact for the current employees. Please leave and keep the current PTO policy intact for the current employees. Please keep and leave the current PTO policy intact for the current employees. Please leave and keep the current PTO policy intact for the current employees. Please leave and keep the current PTO policy intact for the current employees. Now that I have a minute left, I would like to say thank you for the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, and all the volunteers, that, like I said the last meeting, they can care less about medals, they can care less about letters of commendations, they can care less about plaques, shiny plaques to hang up on their walls. What they care about is spending that time with their families and loved ones. And they serve and protect, and they should have the right to keep. And please leave, to keep the current PTO policy intact, not only for them, for each and every one of us who serve this county. And we appreciate your yes vote and to show your colors to the current employees that you would vote yes on this. Please leave and keep the current PTO policy intact for the current employees. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Whiting, for your participation in our democracy. Going on to item thirty-nine, does any board members have any discussion on this item?
Yes, Chairman Moss, if I may. We spent a lot of time talking about this. We've had workshops, we've talked about it at other board meetings, we've had citizens and employees and department heads, and now it's time for us to make some votes and move on and have the employees know what's going to come down the road or not. So, with your permission, I'd like to kind of cut this into two. First, I want to talk about new employees, if we can, if that's okay with everybody.
Well, the floor is yours.
Okay, well, that's what I'd like to, I'd like to first talk and vote on a proposal for new employees, like we had spoken about, and I, if I am reading all this correctly, I believe that we are all in agreement that there will be some kind of change for new employees.
So, are you looking to, a motion to bifurcate the two issues, from you versus current?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion to bifurcate the issues for discussion between new employees and current employees, with the new employees going first. Is there a second to that motion? I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So...
Aye, I'm sorry.
So, we have a, Supervisor Bishop, have you voted?
I'll oppose.
So, bifurcating the issue has failed two to three. Supervisor Angus.
So, let me get this straight. So, we do not want to do anything for even new employees, as we have spoken about in the past. You don't want to do anything for new employees, or, because I know that you don't want to do anything for existing employees, so I'm confused.
Well, if you're, the you being the board in plural, since I think they want to discuss it as it is entirely.
All right.
I believe that we should bifurcate the issue, personally speaking, but, because that's what I think I've heard all our elected officials say to do, but...
Well, we can do this, though. I mean, I could still go forward with my proposal and we can vote on new employees. I mean, we were just, it was just a procedural thing, I don't understand the...
Okay. What's your proposal on new employees, Supervisor Angus?
Okay.
Supervisor Moss?
Yes.
I may be able to help you here. I'd like to reexamine the last vote, if I could, please. I may have misquoted my vote.
Okay.
If you'll recall the vote on the last motion.
Okay, I recall vote to, what is that word that you use?
Bifurcate.
Not that smart. All right, to the vote and to speak about...
Supervisor Angus's position was basically she wanted to discuss the new employees separate from current employees.
Right, I may have misvoted that. I'd like to make that correction.
Okay, so now...
So, we're going to have, we're going to recall the vote, we're going to do the vote over again, okay? For the supervisors who would like to consider the new employees as a separate issue from the current employees, let's go through the vote by roll call, just to make sure there's no confusion.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No, I believe all employees should be treated alike.
Supervisor Bishop?
I'll vote no. I don't mind voting separately, but I'd like to know what we're doing with our current employees before we decide what we're doing with the new employees. So, I just would like to go with current employees first, as it's stated in the agenda.
I will go with a yes. So, I think it's three-two to consider them separately, and we'll start with the new employees.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, what I did was I went through all of the proposals that staff has put together, and as a starting base, I took out what was proposed, and if Ken Cunningham is here, is he here?
Mr. Cunningham, if you can come forward. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
Way back when, one of the first proposals that I believe the county administrator and HR department came up with was, and I had this passed around to the supervisors, would be this first proposal that would start with years of service, zero to three, PTO days fifteen, and that would be a difference of what is, or now, of eleven days. So, zero to three, fifteen days, which is three weeks, which is still very generous and does fall in line with the other counties, is what my concerns were. I hear the thoughts about having to be competitive, and that's all I ask, is that we fall in line with the other, the other counties. Years of service four to nine is twenty days, ten to fourteen is twenty-five days, and fifteen or more is thirty days. And we do have a graph that shows us the difference, and it is significant savings and difference in what is now and what is proposed. And there is a chart, and if maybe if Ken has it, he can put it up on the overhead.
I did not bring the overheads, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Oh, that's okay. You know, if you want, do you want to take this, maybe? And then, also in his proposal, there was a Mojave County time off proposal about the use of PTO leave, and that reads, approved and monitored by employee and department head, allowed only to extend to ensure payment up to employees' budgeted hours, supplement workers' compensation, short-term disability payments, comp time must be used prior to PTO leave, and then a verification of need for sick-related PTO leave. So, this proposal keeps it still in one bucket as just PTO, not divided up. In a perfect world, I think that it should be divided up, but as one of the things that I heard from you guys, that you wanted it to stay PTO, and so that's the reason I'm choosing this one. And then there's, well, that's the carryover later. And, you know, before we go on with this, I want to just address something that was said about it, that PTO had been given as a benefit in the past for not, for pay and things like that. I had been told, and I said it originally, that this particular new benefit package under was given because they had taken the short-term disability away, and that people were encouraged to keep their PTO up to a certain level to make up for that short-term disability before long-term disability. And I want to remind everyone that we have put short-term disability back in. So, if anyone is worried about that, and when we had our EBT meeting the other day, I asked how many people have taken advantage of short-term benefits in the last six months or a year. I think the answer was two. So, I wanted to get that on the record.
Excuse me, ma'am, just, one has applied, but nobody is currently on short-term disability.
Right. It is something that is not used very often, but, you know, because they had taken it away, that's one of the reasons. So, I just wanted that on the record, because it wasn't solely as a benefits package to make up for, you know, salary and stuff like that, okay? So, for that, that is, that is my proposal. And then, as far as carryover for new employees, we're only talking about new employees, hired on or after January first, but I sort of like that to start active immediately after this vote, should it pass. Classified and unclassified full-time employees' max payout would be three hundred hours, and classified and unclassified part-time employee's max payout would be a hundred and fifty hours. Did we talk about the carryover? What was part of that, your carryover for that proposal?
The carryover would be three hundred and one fifty, depending on the classification, the same as...
Right.
Cash out.
Right. So, that is, and I think the entire board had gotten these proposals, so they should be familiar with this particular proposal, and I believe it was the first one, and it was reiterated later on down the road, too. Is that true, Cendrix? This was the one that had been put as the preferred proposal for new employees.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, I'm reading it right now, that's the proposal. At least, the accrual rates was a proposal that was put forth by HR. And can you clarify on the carryover and on the payout? Ken?
Board members, when we were doing this proposal here, the, we put the change in the hours for the accrual rates for the new employees, which went from fifteen to thirty, thirty days, as a request, or as you stated. And then, for the carryover for new employees, we did, in this proposal, put three hundred hours for full-time employees as a cash out and a carryover. And then, for part-time, one fifty for a cash out and carryover, since the accrual rates would be different. But part of this proposal, I don't know if you're going to talk about that later, was to roll over excess into a catastrophic sick...
Yeah, can you, can you talk about that?
Instead of employees losing these hours, once they hit that three hundred hours, they would roll over into a catastrophic sick bank where they could use that if they got a long-term illness. The first five days, or if they were part-time, whatever their, that one week, so if they were only twenty hours a week, they'd only have to use twenty hours, and then they could use that catastrophic sick leave. So, people wouldn't lose after that three hundred hours. They could get up to six hundred hours in the catastrophic leave bank. So, they kind of went hand-in-hand when we made this proposal.
And what would be, what would happen to that, those hours, if there was no, if they didn't have to use it?
If they didn't have to use the catastrophic leave, they would, can accrue up to six hundred hours, and then, once they hit the six hundred hour marks, they wouldn't accrue anymore, or they couldn't, they don't accrue it, they roll over. And so, they wouldn't be able to roll over any more hours. So, technically, you could have three hundred hours in your PTO bank and six hundred hours in your catastrophic sick leave, so basically a nine hundred hour total. If an employee departed at that time, then they would be cashed out those hours in the catastrophic, the proposal was three dollars an hour, up to that six hundred hour maximum.
So, upon leaving, they would get a three dollars per hour that they have in this catastrophic bank?
Yes, ma'am. That was the proposal, if the board accepted it.
I actually think that's a good idea, because you don't want, you want to create a financial incentive for them not to use their catastrophic sick leave by, I'm not saying employees would do this, but there's always the oddball, fake an illness for long term, just so they get that six hundred hours, and they might rather have the eighteen hundred dollar check in lieu of that, and it's nowhere near their regular pay. So, there's a financial incentive for not using the system.
All right, so, but in the best case, I guess, or worst-case for us, best case for them, they leave a three hundred hours, and then, they would have six hundred hours, another eighteen hundred on top of that.
Yes, ma'am. If they rolled them over, I mean, PTO is meant to be used.
Right.
So, but if they decide not to use it, because under the new plan, you know, they would accrue at a little lesser rate, but within two years, if they didn't take PTO, which is not recommended, then it would roll over into a catastrophic sick bank.
Anything over three, so they're always have three hundred in their bank, I mean, at their disposal, and then the rest of it would be going into the bank?
Well, it would be roll over, so if you decide to either roll it over January first, like we currently do, we roll over all those hours, anything above that excess is eliminated currently. Right now, what we're proposing is anything above that three hundred would go into catastrophic. So, technically, on the books, you could have four fifty, whatever, if you haven't taken your PTO bank during the year.
Okay.
The three hundred is just a roll over at the end of the year, whichever you, if you decide a calendar year or a fiscal year.
I think six hundred hours is really high for that, and was there a reason that you picked six hundred?
It was, we used the six hundred based on some of the other counties that we looked at, and it, you know, some counties didn't have any, others had unlimited amounts. We picked something that would stay kind of even with Mojave County.
Okay. So, that whole entirety of that proposal is the fifteen, you want to go, want to go through it again, and then we can, I'm sure the board would like to discuss it.
The proposal for the days is zero to three years is fifteen days of PTO, four to nine years, twenty days of PTO, ten to fourteen, twenty-five days, and fifteen plus is thirty days per year.
And...
And then, with the...
The accrual?
The accrual rate would be a maximum, a roll over of three hundred hours in the calendar year, with a maximum of six hundred hours if you decide to go to the catastrophic leave bank.
Okay. And you find that's in line with other mid-sized counties?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's still, to the people watching, I mean, it's still very generous, but it is, I would say, what, about probably forty percent savings of what the current employees have?
The counties that we looked at, we looked at mid-sized, there's two other counties that have PTO currently. They had, I believe it's Yuma, had like a seven sixty-nine cash out, and then for new employees in two thousand and three, they changed it to four hundred. So, four hundred was the maximum amount roll over for the other two PTO counties. Then, those who had vacation and sick time, vacation was anywhere from two hundred and forty to three sixty, four hundred hours. So, we went kind of the middle of the road.
Well, that's my starting point.
I think it's a good plan for new employees. Any other board comments on this possible new plan? Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Johnson, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you Supervisor Johnson. Do you have any comments on what Supervisor Angus has proposed as being the new employee plan? plan?
My first one is, I strongly believe that we need to separate this out into sick and vacation. I think we're doing ourselves a disservice if we don't do that, and the same thing with the employees. We're pushing something that we cannot toss to continue to fund. I understand where she's going, appreciate the work that she's put into it. I, I think our new employees, I mean, they're going to be the future of Mojave County, so we must make sure that we, you know, are able to attract people. I don't think we can afford to keep comparing ourselves with other counties. I mean, in the job market, I know you have to, but we're seeing other states that are going bankrupt doing that, when people go, oh, well, I'm going to give extra days off or, or more wages, and they put themselves in a hole that the taxpayers cannot get out. And our employees are taxpayers, too. I mean, I, I would think that we would want to make sure that they have a job the next, you know, 20 years, and that it's not going to be a one-year, you get everything you want, and the next year, you're all getting, you know, laid off. Those are the only comments I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Bishop, do you have any comments on Supervisor Angus's proposal?
Yes, I, I think that reducing the PTO for new employees could be detrimental to operations, morale, and future leadership. If the majority of the board does vote for this reduction, I'd recommend that we conduct a review within the first year to find out whether or not those modifications have hindered the county's ability to recruit qualified employees. So if, if we vote to, to reduce the benefits for the new employees, that's, that's my only wish, is that we revisit it and see what it's doing.
Okay. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Moss. We've heard from Sheriff McCabe, and we've heard from several of the other departments. We've yet to hear from Chuck, or, I'm sorry, Judge Gertler, as to how this might affect the court system. I'd like to hear that.
Again, may it please the chairman and board members, you know, the court's concern is that we're making the county average again. We're making it average with respect to other mid-sized counties. And the court's concern, and I think that this has been echoed by Sheriff McCabe, by County Attorney Matt Smith, is that we have a difficult enough time recruiting and retaining people. And if we go to too low of a PTO policy, that's an average with the other counties, you've now put us behind the eight ball. And the reason I say that is that the wages at the other counties are higher than Mojave County. So if our PTO payout is average with Yuma and Yavapai, but they're paying a higher wage, where is a new employee, or as an existing employee, are you going to go? You know, Supervisor Johnson's commented several times, I want nothing but the top employee. The policy that is being contemplated isn't going to get you the top employee. You know, Supervisor Watson read the letter from the employee that left the sheriff's department. Higher pay, greater benefits, same position or less. We just lost a management position PO in Lake Havasu City. This individual had 16 years with the department, was identified as a top management employee for succession planning. She went to Yavapai County at a lesser position for more money. And the site, and the reasons in the exit interview were, were very simple. More pay, better benefits, bottom line. Now, I think we're creating a self-fulfilling prophecy here by turning around and addressing these things. So if you go to an average, you're going to have a difficult time recruiting top employees. That's really the issue. And if we change the current PTO policy, which I think the tenor has been that we're not, I mean, if we did change the current PTO policy, I can think of employees in every single department that have institutional knowledge that we would lose. I mean, it's not just the clerk's office and senior POs and judicial assistants, but I can think of county attorneys, I can think of people in the sheriff's department, the assessor's office, that we would lose. And then if we go to a new policy that is average, you're not going to retain or obtain a top employee. That's the court's concern.
Thank you, Judge Gertler.
Thank you very much, Judge Gertler. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you very much. We've heard from Sheriff McCabe, we've heard from County Attorney Matt Smith, we've heard from Judge Gertler, and I've talked to other department heads and many people involved. I, for one, do not want to be an average county. We've spent years making Mojave County an excellent county. And in order for us to, to continue to hire excellent employees and make sure that we guarantee the success of this organization, I think to change the PTO policy at this time would do nothing but harm the organization. And so with that, I will just recommend personally that I, I don't think it's a good idea to reduce and can further restrain the ability of Mojave County in the three major departments, restrain the ability to go out and garner the best employees possible for Mojave County. That's what I have to say.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Watson. I will say that I believe, that I understand everyone's comments, both elected officials, Supervisor Watson, Supervisor Johnson's comments, Supervisor Angus and Bishop's. My personal opinion is that we have an unsustainable system, and at least at the new employee level, I think Supervisor Angus has proposed a good plan to resolve that, so over time we can draw down that unsustainability. That does not mean that we don't have a wage issue that needs to be addressed, and I think it's something we need to be paying very close attention to next year, when the budget comes around again, because it is, there's a problem, especially in probation and law enforcement, that needs to be addressed. Supervisor Watson?
Yes, I'd like to, just one more item to, to address. A number of months ago, when we first were looking at this problem of PTO, actually, the problem of PTO is that, because it's on the final audit report, it's there for transparency. It's not as real an item as what we're looking at, is the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, which is a huge problem for Mojave County. We ought to be looking at something that really is a huge problem. PTO is not. And I've offered this backup information on how PTO is cured. PTO, for the most part, for 90% of the employees, is taken care of by the time that they've given their, their notice, to the time in which the new employee comes to take their place. And the PTO is completely garnered in that distance of time. The issue of PTO is not that it is an exact dollar-cost liability to our, our livelihood. It is there because it's, it's there for the audit transparency, okay? It has to be shown as a liability because it figuratively exists, okay? You don't know what it's going to be from year to year, have no idea. But I guarantee you one thing, what we need to be addressing is something that we can cure, and that's the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, in which we're only funding 51.8%. That's a real issue. So the PTO issue to me is something that can be cured on a, a by-personnel basis, a per-person basis. It's, it's not an issue that, it's not a $6.2 million issue, it's not. It's an issue that is taken care of on each singular employee as we, as they bring notice, and then they are replaced. The PTO cost is taken in between that period of time. So if we're trying to change this because of the cost factor, it's not really that true of a cost. Now, if we're looking for items that need to be addressed, that are huge problems for Mojave County, then let's look at the Public Safety Retirement System. That is a huge problem, but let's not, let's not make it so to the point where we're limiting the ability to hire good and, and long-term employees. That's my statement.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Watson.
If I may...
When it, when it comes to the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, is that the state system that you're referring to?
Right.
Thank you. Supervisor Angus?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see how we could, we really have that much say in the state retirement system. But it was all, it was a cost factor, and it was also an administration factor. It just didn't come out of thin air. For years, in fact, the first discussion I ever had with Supervisor Johnson was about the administrative problem of all this time off. And maybe it is a problem, a departmental problem, but to this day, I still get people telling me that it was a problem, and as one of the reasons, we brought it up. As far as pay, we've talked about that before. I would love to be able to compensate people more. That's why people take jobs, they take jobs because they want the jobs, but they're compensated. And I, I don't believe, you know, having four weeks or three weeks is, is going to be the decisive factor if someone takes a job or not, and that comes from just my experience. Again, I've never worked in the public sector. These, these times off are very high. I stand by my assertion that we do need to bring it back in line, and then we can see the budget as a whole, and I would love to be able to compensate people better, starting with our sheriff's department. But unless we take care of some of these other issues, that's not going to happen. You're an architect. I mean, every, every meeting, we're, we're hearing about all these things we need, and then when we try to sort of, try to save something somewhere, you know, we get resistant. So anyway, I kind of see the writing on the wall here, but just for the, you know, sake of time, I'm going to expedite this by just making my motion for the proposal that we put out there, and see where it goes from there.
So you've made a motion to adopt the PTO proposal that you and Mr. Cunningham have just gone through?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'm not sure I understand the motion. This is just for new employees?
New employees only.
Just for new employees?
I'll second the motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, and we probably should take this by a roll call vote. Jenny?
Supervisor Watson?
No.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
No.
And Chairman Moss?
Yes.
That's...
The motion fails, 3-2. Is there any other motions which would be pending on, that anyone wants to discuss on this issue?
Well, I was going to talk about, you know, the existing employees, but I see, again, the writing on the wall, and I'm, I'm not into wasting time, so that's it for this motion, for this item.
Well, there was an issue that I was curious on, that you were discussing at one point, sending out to a private attorney, the $5,000 for an opinion letter on current employees?
Well, I mean...
Policy.
I, I suspect that, you know, although, and Supervisor Johnson might back me up or not on this, but I, I don't think this is something that is going to go away. I think when we talk about our budget next year, this is going to come up again.
Well, I was thinking it more for purposes of getting the parameters of our lawful authority, because I've heard many contradictory statements, and I wanted to clarify the scope and power of the authority of the board for both this discussion and possible future discussions, because we had a lot of contradictory issues out there, and I, for one, would be very appreciative if we could send that to the attorney that you had identified for purposes of getting an opinion paper on what our authority actually is, as opposed to getting three different statements from three different people.
Then I make a motion that we, what do you put aside, up to...
Hire the independent lawyer, I believe you have the name?
Hire an independent lawyer, who I've identified, there is a firm from Phoenix who handles these kinds of issues, to review what our, our powers are to make these kinds of benefit changes in the future.
And do you have that attorney's name?
Yes, I do. The name of the firm is Jackson Lewis, Jeffrey Burnick, from Jackson Lewis.
So your motion to hire Jackson Burnick of Jefferson, Jackson Lewis, did I say that correctly?
Yes.
And last time, I think we had discussed an operating budget of $5,000, was that correct?
Yes.
And is that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for discussion. Supervisor Johnson?
My discussion would be, would the maker of the motion be willing to amend it to say that we have a, a special board meeting for executive session to discuss a list of questions to be provided to an attorney for answers, so that they have something to work off of, you know, to say, is this allowed, is that allowed, so that they're not trying to find out from five different people what five different people want?
I, I like that, I do, because the initial idea for this was, I was, based on prior discussions, I was under the impression that the board was ready to change the policy for new employees. This is a very surprising turn of events, so the idea that he'd be reviewing something that we were going to pass today, but being that that did not happen, that's a very good idea. So I guess the motion, if I can change the motion, that we set an executive session for our next board meeting to discuss questions for an employment attorney review.
Okay, we have an amended motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I personally like that amended motion and second. Is there any further discussion on this particular issue? All right, we have a motion to bring this, to hire this attorney, and that at the next regular meeting, we'll have an executive session for purposes of posing questions, formulating questions to pose to this attorney. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
It passes 3-2. Going on to the revised item 46, going back to item 46, Treasurer Cox and Presiding Judge Gertler?
Chairman Moss?
Yes.
Do we need a motion to leave the current employees' PTO alone?
Treasurer Cox, if you can have a seat for just a moment. I was focused on the new employees, and I completely forgot to deal with the current employees. We're still on item 30, now, is there any further action that anyone would like to take as to item 39?
Yes, Chairman Moss. I just wanted to state that in reviewing the information from the various department heads, comments from employees, and discussions with elected officials and county administrations, I am definitely opposed to changing the PTO for current employees at this time, but I would be willing to revisit this at a time and place when we can do a wage compensation. At that time, I think it would be appropriate to revisit the PTO for current employees. So I, I do make a motion that we leave the current PTO for current employees as currently is.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second motion.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Supervisor Johnson?
I would rather wait till after we had our, our next meeting or subsequent meeting with another attorney, but obviously, the board will, will carry it through. But, you know, we're looking at now with a, with a plan that has, what, 39 days maximum off, we have another 10 holidays, a floating day, that's 50 days off a year for employees. Judge Gertler was right, that I, I would like to be able to pay our employees the highest in the state and get the highest quality of people. We can't do that with the tax structure that we have now. We're looking at one portion of it that we cannot continue to, to fund, and that's why, I mean, with our offices, the sheriff can talk about, you know, his people and Judge Gertler, but when you're giving an employee that many days off, that is not a full-time employee. Our people are not working full-time. That's my only comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second, we've had comments from Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Angus, do you have any comments?
No.
Supervisor Bishop, any further comments?
No.
Supervisor Watson, any further comments?
I'd like to make one comment, and that was a report given by James Schutman from the Deputy County Attorney's Office. And I'd like us to all kind of remember kind of where we're at. And I'd like to give a quote here from the Arizona Supreme Court, and it came from a case by, concerning Demetassi versus ITT Corporation. And the Arizona Supreme Court says, and I quote, "In all other entrances, the contract ..." rule is, and always has been that, one should keep their promises," end quote. That's how I approach this whole item.
I will say that Mr. Schottman wrote a very good letter. There are things that I disagree within that letter from his legal analysis, but we're all entitled to our opinions.
Can I just say one more thing? I forget who was just up here, and they said that over the time they've been an employee, these benefits packets has changed, gone up, gone down. So this is not, you know, unprecedented, that this happens in governments. Let's just remember that, too.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. We probably take this by roll call vote, which is essentially leave the current employees' PTO policy unchanged.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Angus?
No.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
And Chairman Moss?
No.
So we did, it did not pass?
It did not pass. Basically, my interpretation is, and the only thing we've agreed on on this issue, is that we will speak to an attorney, an outside attorney regarding the parameters of our authority. That's the only forward progress that's been made on item 39. Going on to item 46, Judge Gertler and Treasurer Cox.
Subject to Dave Withy's opinion, the court would be able to provide a space from 8 till noon. However, I believe that there are some issues that preclude from this happening, so I'll turn it over to Treasurer Cox.
Thank you very much, Judge Gertler.
Thank you, Judge Gertler, and thank you very much, Judge Gertler and Verlin Tenell, for offering up their space. We truly appreciate it, and I would like to work toward making that happen. There are a couple of issues that we have that preclude us from doing this. The first thing is our reaction time. We have less than two weeks to make this happen. This is a budget issue, and we can look at it any way we want to, but the fact is that the employees that are in my office, we have been working for six months on a plan, and it's not one person, it's everyone in the office. And there are 22 employees, and the other two employees that were referred to as being given to me are part of the Office of Management and Budget. They continue to do internal audit things. They are not involved with the current taxes and collection of taxes in my office at this point, because they just moved in this week. They are not brought up to speed in any way, shape, or form, if that was something that we decided that we were going to do. The new initiative that was brought to the board, to the county administrator, to finance for this year was to open the satellite offices permanently. There was a dollar amount attached to that. Unfortunately, the paper, when it was printed, said that it was $200,000 to operate the offices. That's correct, but that's not the capital cost that we had spoken about. That's also all of the costs that are included with what, the cameras and the glass and the counters, cash counters, and things that we had spoken about. The thing that was adopted by the board was the new initiative saying, we're going to open the satellite offices with no cash, accepting no cash. That was accepted by the board in our 2016 budget, because we very clearly put in there temporary employee services for temporary satellite offices, not accepting cash. So with that in mind, I'd just like to quickly address two things that I feel, I don't understand why there's an adversarial situation between the supervisors and the treasurer. I thought we worked in tandem. I thought we worked together, and I've been doing everything I possibly can to make that happen with the board. The closure of the offices originally, to my recollection, in 2008, because I was here in 2008, we were directed to close those offices to save money. Whether the treasurer made the decision to do that, that is not my understanding. I was literally directed, write up this scenario and tell me how much it's going to save the county, because I don't want to close these. That's what the treasurer at the time told me. So I don't believe that it was the treasurer's decision, number one. And we did not absorb the six employees that were out there. We absorbed two of them, and we then were subsequently told we could not hire two people that we did not have. So we have the same number of employees. We had 30 people at that time. We now have 22, and that includes me. So the fact that we have more employees is not, is incorrect statement. And Mr. Extrem, I have a question. Supervisor Johnson stated that it was the treasurer's decision whether or not to open those offices or not. Is that your opinion, your legal opinion?
Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Extrem.
The treasurer has independent statutory responsibility to collect the taxes. Your duties are set forth in the statutes. As far as the Board of Supervisors go, they have a responsibility to oversee the operation of your office, not to make day-to-day decisions on the operation of your office. Whether you have satellites or not is a decision of the board, because they ultimately have to pay for it.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Treasurer Cox.
Please.
And I'm struggling with a couple of things here, because I think you said, why are we adversarial to the board? The whole issue on the money, cash issue, had to do with the avoiding the county having a financial responsibility. And I believe that Attorney Extrem, based upon the Arizona Constitution and federal law, acknowledges that there's exposure to us if we refuse to accept cash, which is what you said.
Absolutely.
It has nothing to do with us being in adversarial position. That has everything to do with this board trying to protect you and your staff.
And can I say, Supervisor Moss, I truly appreciate that. The adversarial position I was stating was the fact that Supervisor Johnson says, we have enough staff. It's my problem, not yours. And what I'm saying is, it is my issue, absolutely.
But my next comment is, because my understanding is, your need was for security, and I believe I heard that said at the last meeting, that we have to take security. And when I'm hearing from the courts, which is assuming that they're allowed to do this through their office of administrative, the court's office, is probably two of the most secure buildings in the county with armed guards, bulletproof glass, video cameras, all the rest of it, has provisionally said, you can place your employees that you're going to send there anyway to work out of our space, so they're absolutely safe and protected, and there's video cameras running, and 95% of your concerns are addressed. When it comes to the staging issue, to the extent that there's a problem, why wouldn't it just a note on your door saying, go down the hallway, or go down the road to this address to deal with it? I mean, it seems like we have a solution, a potential solution, because it depends upon the opinion letter from the court, which would deal with 95-plus percent of the concerns that are out there, but there doesn't seem to be a lot of desire to work within that framework, because what I hear is, you know, it's a money issue, as opposed to, let's think outside the box. We have an alternative solution. We're surrounded by other county employees. We could make this work. I see something that's workable here. I don't think it's something that we should throw away and walk away from. So that's my comments on this, because I thought the court's offer was very good, and the only better offer, I think, would be out there, would be if they put them in the sheriff's substations.
And can I respond to that? My understanding is, as well, that the statute, or the legality, says that we have to be open from 8 to 5. Is that the case, Mr. Extrem?
I think the main office is open 8 to 5.
I was told that if we have to accept cash, we also have to do all the things that we do here at the county seat at the satellite offices.
The only issue I've heard is that the legality of refusing cash is an issue. Attorney Extrem?
Mr. Moss, that's correct. I think the 8 to 5 issue applies to your offices at the county seat.
It does not, yeah, it doesn't apply. There's a federal law, and there's an Arizona constitutional provision regarding the issue of cash, which makes things very difficult. When it comes to the hours of operations, satellite offices, there's no constitutional provisions or federal laws that have anything to do that, that I know of, anyway.
Poor timing, okay. That's helpful. The other issue is staffing. I have one staff member for each area.
And you'd be surrounded by court staff in the same, behind the same window?
Dual cash control, which means that there needs to be an extra person there that counts and accepts cash, that balances out the person, because this is for control, not just for us, but control to make sure that we eliminate the possibility of anyone stepping into it.
I understand what you're saying, but there comes a point where we say, we can't solve all your problems. I mean, we think we may have a system that solves 98% of them. So that's all I'll say. Judge Gertler is looking like he wants to move in and say something.
I can appreciate Treasurer's Cox concerned with the court. As I say, we have minimum accounting standards. We have a three-tiered system. One clerk that takes the money in, a second that reconciles, and a third that does the banking. So I would assume the treasurer is going to have to have two people at an office. The good people in procurement that I've worked with on several projects also reference, though, that in the past, what the board has done is that under the security services contract, you have a provision in there that allows for specialized events with specialized pricing, that you could open up the satellite offices under your specialized event clause in your security services contract to provide the security at the satellite offices. And likewise, under your countywide banking contract, you can term this as a specialized event and have armored car services, so that you may still be able to utilize those two options. However, once again, that's a general fund expenditure, you know, separate from utilizing, you know, the court windows.
But it doesn't sound like it's a $200,000 general fund expenditure.
No, that was for an entire year, the 200,000.
So, what I mean, my suggestion, item 46, is I do think there's a workable solution here, and I would recommend to the board that we turn item 46 over to County Attorney Hendricks, County Attorney, demoting and/or promoting you again, County Administrator Hendricks, Judge Gertler, and Treasurer Cox. Go ahead.
Chairman Moss, I believe, is item 47, isn't it?
It is, it is 47. I misspoke. I apologize. I wrote it down wrong on my form. It's item 47. Thank you very much, Supervisor Watson. So Treasurer Cox, you look like you want to say something else?
No.
No, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor Johnson?
I don't believe we need a motion. That's the treasurer's job. If she wants to meet with the corpse, that's a great idea. I appreciate Judge Gertler for bringing that forward, but I don't think it needs a board action from us.
Well, I believe that County Attorney Extrem may have at least partially disagreed with you, Supervisor Johnson, because he mentioned that it was up to the board to assist the treasurer in establishing the satellite offices. Did I interpret that correctly?
Mr. Chairman, it is not inappropriate for the board to engage itself with the treasurer on this.
So he could be right, but it's not, he could be right, Supervisor Johnson could be right in that it's really a treasure issue, but it's not outside our purview to stick our nose into that issue to assist things getting done.
I wouldn't characterize it as sticking your nose in, but it is appropriate for the board to do what you propose.
Okay, I'll characterize it as sticking our nose in. All right.
Can I ask a question?
And I guess, Mr. Chairman, that's kind of what I was saying. I mean, it's up to the treasurer to do it, and anybody who brings in cash money, which is very few people, and now when you're divided among three cities, they're going to make sure that the treasurer's person who's there counts the money and issues them a receipt. So if they have, they send one person down from 8 to 12, they count the money, they count it twice, count it three times in front of the person, because there's not that many people bringing in cash, they both agree, they both sign the paper, and they walk away happy. I don't see the big problem with the maintenance.
Can I just mention one thing about that? And I understand your point, Supervisor Moss, that this is a short-term endeavor, and we don't want to, you know, complicate it with all the accoutrements that we have here. Okay, I understand that. One of the things that we have here is, we have cameras directly over each one of the stations. And the reason that we have that, including other camera views, the reason that we have that is because, for example, if a person walks up, and if you've ever heard of the exchange change, where, oh, here, can you give me change for this? Can you, oh, can you give me, and they walk away, and they walk away with a lot of money, much more than what they thought. And this is not a game, and this is not something that happens infrequently. This is a regular thing that happens. We, our cashiers are trained to see that, to acknowledge it, and take each individual exchange individually, okay, so that that doesn't happen. If they give you a $10 bill, you give them change, and then you move to the next transaction. Part of the issue also is, if you, Supervisor Moss, decide that you want to pay cash in Bullhead City, and you walk up to my office and you hand $2,000 to my cashier who's sitting behind the desk, you've now put it through a bulletproof glass, and they count it, and they say it's $1,000, what are you going to say? We have no cameras to say, yes, that was $2,000. Those are the reasons that we have those things in place. I'm not saying it's going to happen. I'm saying we have them in place for reasons, because we have to adhere to GASB, Government Accounting Standards Board. We have to comply with UMAC and UMAC. These are rules that are in place for a reason. That's all I have.
I agree with you, Treasurer Cox, that these rules are in place for a reason. However, these are part-time satellite offices, and I think there's a system that we could use to make do. It just takes the willingness to engage. And on item 47, the agenda, I think it's best if the board simply requests the treasurer, the presiding judge, and the county administrator to engage on flexible solutions, this small-term, short, not small-term, short-term issue. So I'll put that in the form of the motion. Is there a second?
Chairman Moss?
Yes.
There's going to be a dollar expense involved in addition to this, to the treasurer's office. Would you like to include some dollar limitation in your motion?
I will, yeah. I'm going to amend my motion to, when it comes to, it vests the county administrator with authority to make an expenditure of not to exceed $20,000 to effect the short-term solution in cooperation with the courts, if it's possible.
And I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Can I ask a question? I mean, is that a number that makes sense to you?
I have to tell you, my knee-jerk reaction has not served me well in my life, so I tend not to knee-jerk. I don't know what the cost is. I know that we put in $5,000 for the employees, so that I know that if we had a second employee, it would be $5,000. However, I don't know who we would get and how we would train them in two weeks.
I just want to reiterate the situation here. As the treasurer, you would, your decision would be not to have satellite offices because of the cash. That was your decision. That's what you would, your preference.
My preference is to open the satellite offices and not take cash, but seeing as that's illegal.
Okay, seeing that that is it, that's it.
Correct. Had we discussed it six months, like, for now, I can get ready and have that in place for April, no problem. But this is not, this is, you know, like, nine days from now to have everything put in place that we need to. I'm not saying we won't try. I'm not saying that it can't happen. What I'm saying is, that's a pretty big endeavor, especially when the lines, if you saw them when you walked in, are out to the door now, and we have all hands on deck. Everyone is working for current tax. So all the other things are being put to the side, so that your constituents aren't calling you and saying, I can't believe I had to wait two hours. I can't believe that they haven't cashed my check. I can't, we put things in place so that didn't happen this year. And now you're saying, okay, well, take some of your staff away and go deal with this other issue that we, for all intent and purposes, we had an opinion that said we didn't have to take cash. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, that's the piece where I'm at, just, I don't know how to get there.
Right. I think we should respect the treasurer's decision on this, for this tax session, and work towards fixing it next one. I think we're putting a lot of undue strain on the treasurer's office during a time that we don't need to.
Thank you, Supervisor Angus. County Administrator Hendricks?
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask a question of Cindy Cox, if I might, just to provide some clarification. Cindy came to administration with her budget proposal, and administration took a look at that, along with finance, and we made a recommendation to the board that was accepted. And with the allotted monies that she had available, and correct me if I'm wrong, Cindy, Treasuryor Cox proposed that she would open satellite offices... Cindy Treasurer Cox proposed that she would open satellite offices for a limited amount of time and not take cash and take credit cards. That issue was brought up, that, there was an issue that was brought up on whether that was legal to do. And we obtained a county attorney opinion that, yes, it was, the issue about taking cash applied, that you have to take cash someplace in Mojave County in the, in the county seat. However, because we're providing an extra service to outlying areas, you could put conditions on that extra service to allow you to provide that service. And that condition, one condition, was that you didn't have staff or the funding to take cash. So, Treasurer Cox has actually provided a solution that was approved by the board to where she has satellite offices, but she does not take cash in those satellite offices. If you're asking if the board's directing you to do otherwise, then I think that's when you're talking about me getting engaged. However, if that solution is sufficient for the board.
Your legal opinion, I think, might be slightly out of date, Attorney, County Administrator Hendricks. By letter dated October 1st, which is in the backup, Mr. Ekstrom advised the board to either not open the satellite offices or make it available for them to take cash because of Arizona constitutional provisions.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, I believe that opinion was originally given as you described, but I think that opinion has changed as of October 1st.
Right. The, the original opinion, and thank you, County Administrator Hendricks, for bringing that up. The original opinion was issued in April or so of 2014, and that's when we made the decision not to take cash in the satellite offices.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Johnson.
If this is costing the county money, where is the money coming from?
I believe we have a contingency.
Okay, that'll be a part of your motion?
Yes, I will amend my motion to direct that the 20, up to $20,000 would come from the contingency fund, and I don't know if Supervisor Watson would be willing to second that amendment.
No.
The answer is no.
Answer is no. We can't attack the contingency dollars any more than we already have.
Can I speak to that for one? I'm sorry. Excuse me. One of the things that, that is brought to mind when we think about spending money on the satellite offices, and, and please take this with the caveat that it's intended, I would love nothing more than have satellite offices everywhere. I, I would love nothing more than that, to serve all of the constituents and have them not have to go far to pay their taxes, because that's, that's a really wonderful thing that we could do. However, it costs money. One of the things that we do as the county is we had procurement go out and get us a point and pay, a contract with a company called Point and Pay. They do all of our credit card processing. They charge a convenience fee for anyone that uses that service. We, as the county, cannot pay for that. We're not allowed to pay for that. My understanding is that there's some kind of a law that precludes us from charging a convenience fee. Is this not a convenience issue where we're saying, all right, all of the county, no matter where you live, you need to pay for people in Bullhead City and people in Lake Havasu to have these satellite offices open so that you can take cash? I'm not saying that's wrong. I'm saying that comes to mind when I think of this.
Thank you, Treasurer.
And is that, is that, is that something that we want to do?
Thank you Treasurer Cox for those comments. I did make a mistake. Chuck DeShazier was signed up to speak on item 47 of the agenda. Mr. DeShazier?
My name is Chuck DeShazier, 7978 Polaris Road. You know, I'm seeing what's going on here, and the judge is offering the courts to provide a secure space. I guess my, my comments on it are that, as living outside of Kingman, it feels like everybody outside of Kingman gets cheated. I mean, we get two weeks out of the year, which is 10 business days. So, why is it that the county treasurer can't shut down for five or six days over here and at least provide Havasu City with five days and Bullhead City with five days in these secure spaces? I guess that's my comments, and I'm, I don't know what the office's priorities are, but, you know, they, if they can send one person, why can't they, you know, allocate a couple of people? Thank you.
Thank you very much to Mr. DeShazier. All right. I believe the current status is we have a motion and a second. There was a subsequent attempted to amendment to that motion, or clarify the motion, which was not seconded. So, currently, I don't think there's a motion currently on the floor of item 47. If anyone would like to make a motion of item 47, I might be willing to entertain it. If not, we'll just pass by this issue with no action. All right, we are passing by item 47 with no further action. Item 40, discussion of possible action. Ray, appoint to the Mojave County Agricultural Extension full board member, alternative board member Terry Henry, and master gardener Irene Rose of Lake Havasu City, and to alternate board member, master gardener Jamie Zimmerman of Lake Havasu City, and Brenda Stockbridge, Secretary Treasurer of Mojave Livestock Association and Mojave County Farm Bureau. This is continued from our September 8th meeting. County Administrator Hendricks.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Going on to item 41, discussion of possible action. Ray, approve the Board of Supervisors issuing a recommendation to the Arizona State Board of Geographic and Historic Names to approve acknowledging the proposal of Serenity Hill as a name of a previously unnamed hill in Section 20, Township 23 North, the Range 16 West, in the unincorporated area of Mojave County, and authorizing the chairman of the board to respond to the state board.
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Going on to item 42, discussion of possible action. Ray, building security at the Mojave County Lake Havasu City Annex. This is continued from our August 17th and September 8th meetings. Supervisor Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, what the county manager is going to give with me, they submitted the one, one proposal to build a wall, which obviously is going to cost us money, which, which I don't agree with, but I, I think the overall security of our buildings is what I'm basically getting at. The, the security that we have now in place would be adequate, except that our own employees bypass the security system. There are doors left open in each of the facilities, sometimes propped open with rocks or chairs or something to let airflow go in, I guess. I, I think we need to look at all the security we're providing if we're getting our monies worth. That was, that was my big concern.
Thank you. County Administrator Hendricks, or Ms. Lotowski? I see he's lurking again.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I, I did is I, I, I believe I understood what Supervisor Johnson was wanting to see, so I asked our Public Works Director to have our guys take another look at the security in the building, to include the doors being propped open, and see if there was some mechanism that could be established to prohibit or discourage that type of an activity. And I believe that's, can be reported on today by our Public Works Director, Steve Lotowski, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Lotowski.
Chairman Moss, members of the board, Public Works indeed examined the issues to establish public access to the Lake Havasu Central Complex while maintaining secure access only to the portions of the building occupied by the courts by probation, as well as the county attorney's office. I have a schematic drawing here that shows how, that secure and non-secure access would be developed, as well as an estimate of cost. Effectively, to establish public access to those administrative portions on the westerly side of the building, as you all know Supervisor Johnson's office is already not secure, we would establish a, an existing doorway on the north side of the building that would be open during normal business hours, but would have an access control system, electronic access control system, to enable it to be locked outside of normal business hours. We would also, in the northerly corridor, establish a, a wall, a frame, an electronically secured access to be able to have a demarcation of the secure versus non-secure access. We would locate it west of where the county attorney and probation offices are located. Staff estimates, estimates the cost of those improvements would be about $10,000. Further, Supervisor Johnson brings up a very good point concerning the control of those doorways, external doorways, on the court's secure side. We've identified six particular doors that, if outfitted with electronic access control systems, would, could be secured for a cost of $500 per door or $3,000. That can be handled independent on, of the initial investment to establish secure versus non-secure. So, the overall expense would be $13,000. And just one last point on the external doors adjacent to courts. Essentially, it would create an alarm notification if that door was left ajar for a specified number of seconds.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lotowski. Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Lotowski, and the proposed fix to this issue? Supervisor Johnson, do you have any questions? Supervisor Johnson?
I'm here. Takes me a while to turn the phone back on to get it off.
No, I, I've been there. I understand. Do you have any questions for Mr. Lotowski?
I, I understand what he's saying. I, I think, I mean, my biggest thing is the security for our employees. And the, the recent attack, I don't know, it was a year, year and a half ago in, in France, where they used the employees to bypass the security is what concerns me. When, I know it's a hassle to go through the security every time you exit or enter the building, but it, it adds two things. Besides giving the security there for the people in the court, it also gives the security officers the ability to say, you know, we let Steve Moss in earlier, and we don't seem when we're trying to get people out for an emergency, you know, whether it be a fire or a gun, or we're looking for somebody. And, and that's my biggest thing, the controlling point, so that somebody knows who is in the building, and so that we can't go and take somebody hostage, or their children hostage, and say, you need to take this into our courts. If Ms. Lotowski thinks she's solved the problem, I'm all for it. I don't like spending the extra money, but if we have to, I guess I'll go along with it.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Lotowski? I will say, Mr. Lotowski, I think you've done an excellent job with doing a, was it a very cost-effective solution to this, solution to this problem? It's a, as always, your department goes well above and beyond, and I do appreciate that. I mean, as to the point as to the security regarding employees, I think every human system is vulnerable to employee collusion or coercion when it comes to security bypasses, such as the prison in New York, where the prison guard helped the other convicted murderers escape. So, it's just, it's not something we can prevent 100%. And I think you've got a good system with those timer locks, or timer notifications on the doors. Is there a motion on item 42? I'll make a motion that we accept the fixes proposed by Public Works, and that direct them to begin to take action in order to resolve this issue.
Second motion.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, Ms. Lotowski. Going on to item 43, discussion of possible action. Ray, adoption of the proclamation naming the month of October as Cyber Security Month in Mojave County to be signed by the chairman of the board. Can I have a motion on item 43?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Going on to item 44, discussion of possible action. Ray, considering support for proposed legislation titled Preservation of Historic Route to Provide an Administrative Process for Handling Assertions and Claims under RS 2477. This is under Supervisor Johnson's name. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully, I provided enough backup, and obviously, all of our board members are very aware of the situation we have. I did have a few questions from one of our planners, which I will get in the answers on. I think this is a, a good, a good thing that the feds are trying to do, and we're trying to get into the federal government. Just ask for your support, and I'll answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Supervisor Johnson?
No questions.
Any questions? There is no questions. I believe everyone has read the backup, and I suspect they agree with you. Is there a motion on item 44?
Motion approved.
Is there?
Second.
We have two seconds. I'll give it to Supervisor Watson this time, because he's on my left. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Going to item 45, discussion of possible action. Ray, signing on the chart, onto the charter for the Management Oversight Group, MOG, and move to approve Mojave County's participation, MLOG. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, hopefully, I've provided enough backup. This is basically a formality for us to sign on to that. We'll take care of it through Quad State, who we've designated to handle these. Also, as on the side today, thanks to Chairman Watson and his job with the state agencies, they decided not to list the sonor and total.
Like it.
Okay. Any questions for Supervisor Johnson? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second by Supervisor Angus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it, have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, we are adjourned, folks.